Good evening. I'm going to call the meeting to order. The order in which we'll be taking the items for this evening are as follows.
We're going to change it.
You're going to change it?
Yeah, I think we'll hear 16 North Astor versus engineers or the other. It's not here yet.
Well, Hudson Engineering's not here?
Yeah, it's up there.
Oh, okay. All right, well then, let's start.
My additions.
Okay, let's start with 16 North Astor, then 2019-19, 16 North Astor Street, Jackson Strayano LLC.
Actually, I don't see.
It's the same one, by the way.
Same one, right?
We can do it. Why don't you call the AMR for us?
Yeah.
Move it along. No, no.
Here's Hudson now.
For, uh, we were here a month ago and we responded to comments that were received from Han Engineering and also from the board. And I'll begin by running through those. On first drawing 001, we updated the parking configurations. The comments that we received from Han Engineering are related to the previous application and in development that we realized that we had actually missed one of the important sections in the code which allows us to reduce the parking by two spaces if there's on-street front parking across the front of the building. In the previous applications, that had been taken into account and I'm pretty sure that that was. That application, of course, went on to the Board of Trustees for approval of the reduction of one street spot to allow for the driveway. And that was approved by the Board of Trustees. We are lined up to attend the Board of Trustees meeting on Monday, this Monday, and we'll be filing a similar application, similar but not identical. Of course, our parking configuration is slightly different. In the previous parking configuration that was approved, there were three interior spaces, and those were achieved by excavating a large chunk of what's apparently a large bedrock at the rear of the building and also impacting the foundation walls there. Twenty-inch-thick rubble walls that have been there for 150 years or something. Now, I think that was one of the problems with the previous application and why it was denied. So going into this, we were not going to mess at all with the foundation walls. And because of that, we can only put in, we can only fit in two spots, one of which is legal and one of which is not. However, in doing the calculations with the reduced street spots, we only need one spot. So the tandem spot, the non-conforming spot, is sort of irrelevant. It'll still serve well for the owner of the building who will be living on the top floor. But we're feeling that we're conforming with the parking, not looking for variance anymore on that. But we will need approval of the, of reducing the street spot from the Board of Trustees, and we're hoping we'll get that on Monday. We were asked to show the driveway configuration, amend the driveway configuration and show grades, and we've done that. To provide a diagram showing stormwater drainage. So this was, this was part of our submitting where we're showing various areas of the roof and exposed, you know, there's a garden area that is exposed on the second floor and then there's a garden area on the third floor and then there's a roof. All these various areas that are subject to runoff, we've shown how they're going to be routed into the Lo system that includes, that includes a holding tank to mitigate the peak runoff periods. We were also asked to, by Han, to look into the drainage easement and run away. The stormwater drainage for the building is run through the property to the south. We've provided the document of the easement showing that. I can also tell you that we've personally verified the six-inch HDPE drain pipe at the inlet on the easement, it's visible there. And then again, at a, at a collection box down below the driveway at the building to the south, I think it's 14 Astor, the same, it looks like the same pipe and it's six inches in both locations. So we feel highly confident that that pipe runs through. It also aligns exactly with what's shown on the survey. So it's pretty well corroborated. The, I think we can do a di-test if it's deemed necessary by the engineers as well just to further confirm that. We got a temporary permit for demolition at the interior of the building and that was really helpful. We were able to remove a number of the finishes and see what was going on. And that also was positive in that we can see that the waste piping, sanitary piping is distinct and separate from the stormwater drainage within the building.
It's pretty unique for the age of that building. That would be, that the storm and the sanitary wouldn't be combined.
You know, I'm not sure when that started changing, really. I know in the early days, they used to combine it. The stormwater piping in the building is six-inch cast iron. It's formidable and, and separate, entirely separate.
Okay.
How did you verify that?
We can see the inlets where the stormwater comes in. We could see the pipes running in the building and down the building without any connections to the wastewater piping. And then we could see the wastewater piping where it was connecting into the main stack and running down into the concrete slab below. And then we assume headed towards a house trap which we found at the front of the building. So there are portions of the stormwater drain which we can't see, and there are portions of the wastewater, the sanitary drain that we can't see. So, but neither of them are directed towards each other or really very close to each other. So it would be extremely surprising if they were connected. The other thing is that the stormwater drain is running near the wastewater piping. If they were going to connect it, we would probably see those connections because the stacks are not very far apart, but they're completely distinct and separate. We've provided sections through the building, longitudinal and transverse, that show the different garden terraces and roof through the building. One of the things that's come up is the separation between the roof spaces in our building and the building to, so that occurs right here. You can see two lines here. Basically, you know, these sections are cut in different areas, and this one is towards the back of the building, this one's at the front of the building. No, is that correct? Let's see.
Are they both west?
Yeah, one is, one is cut further closer to the street and one, yeah, this is the, this is the, this is the lower one here. No, this is the rear one here, and this is the front one. It's actually hard to see the difference. But what's happening is the grade, you know, is coming up from the street or pitching down as you get to the front of the building. So at the, at the, at the front of the building, the rear wall is here. At the back of the building, it's higher. But our wall goes up to the same height as the existing wall. That is, there's a gable roof that stops and a wall that comes down, and that's what the neighbor sees. And at the low plan, it's about seven or eight feet above their backyard, and we're maintaining that straight across. So their privacy is, is pretty well protected. And then, so you can see from, from this garden space on the roof, there's a tall wall that separates the view. So no one in this garden is going to be able to see anything next door. Here's the grade next door, here's the wall. From this roof area, it's also serving to block it. So the eye level comes across and clips about seven feet or so above the rear yard at the worst condition, which is the rear where the grade is the highest. At the front, it's, it's much lower.
And that's a residential unit, correct? The upper one?
Yes.
Yeah, I had a question on your section number five. On the property to the, to the north of you, it shows, this is the approximate height of the patio or deck of that house. So is, it was confusing. Is the deck coming all the way over to that wall or not?
I have to apologize. It says existing had a deck. In fact, it's a, it's a steel stair landing that's about three feet square that provides a stair for the upper floor of the building. It's not really a patio or a deck at all. And I don't have a photograph of that, but that's entirely separate and above the rear yard which is used by the tenants there. So.
So where you have your crosshatch, that's where they actually use the rear yard?
That's, that's green.
Excuse me?
Yes, sir.
And, and what, your blue line then above it?
Is a landing that, it's a small landing outside of an exit door that feeds a stair that goes down.
That goes down? Okay.
The wall, is that the existing wall? You said there was a shed there with a wall, or is that a brand-new wall?
We're going to have to rebuild the wall. The existing wall is ancient framing and it's not in very good condition. The siding on the neighbor's side is old tongue-in-groove sheathing with tar paper on it. It's, it's a mess and so we're planning to take that down when we take the roof down, take that down and rebuild it.
So what will the wall look like?
Good question. You know, one of the things we have to deal, deal with here is we have quite a, quite an extended vertical height of it. It's technically unsupported. So in the periods since our last presentation, we've been working with a structural engineer, looked at various ways to do the wall, brick or perhaps metal stud framing with cement board or CMU with stucco. And we're leaning towards CMU with stucco because we can much, we can anchor that into the existing heavy foundation wall much better by dialing it in, and we can put lots of reinforcing in it, both horizontal and vertical. And then we can color the stucco in such a way that it will be nice. I mean, we're not, we're not locked in on anything there, but I'm leaning towards maybe coloring the stucco a sort of a sienna red to look like the brick so that it, so that it goes well with the, with the rest of the building.
Just one other question I had. The, again, on section number five, on the left side of the section, you have that, that deck that is for, actually on the third floor again, or in the second floor, that overlooks the first floor and then looks over into the neighbor to the north. But you're saying that because of the distance and the height of the wall separating your applicant's property from the neighbor to the north, that the people at the commercial unit would not be able to see into the yard to the north?
Right.
Up above.
The commercial deck is here.
Okay.
This is the residential.
Oh, sorry, that's the residential. I'm sorry. Okay. Well, then, still on, on section number five, that residential deck, would it not be, it's up to you, but it just dawned on me though that you have that person that's shown there that really could be looking down into the patio or the deck below. Would it not be better to put a higher wall there to give privacy to both of them?
You know, I think it's a good point. We sort of showed this minimum wall. Again, that's the owner's, that's the owner's deck. I imagine that we probably will want to screen that a little bit higher and, and since it's hers, it'll probably be done in a really nice way. I think moving forward, you know, all of these details are still, are still being resolved. I can tell you that it looks like we'll be, we will have steel channels that, probably three of them, that will be strapped to the CMU wall to provide additional lateral bracing since it's fairly tall and unsupported. And we think that it'll have a sort of an industrial look. It's only there on the garden side and it'll be lined up in kind of nice.
What are those things that look like hurls on the roof? I couldn't see an arrow explaining.
They're just a representation of solar panels. And what's happening is that this, this front roof is pitching up. And so the solar panels are, in that view, it's, it's a convinced elevation. So you're seeing them stack up to the feet, in fact, up to, as they, as they ascend on the roof up to the street. In fact, the solar panels are only come up about, probably about 10 inches or so above the, above the roof surface.
How per view for solar panels? Is that the ARB or?
The ARB handles it, the solar panel. But at no point can the solar panel be above the bridge.
I was just going to ask. You can't see them from the street.
You cannot see them from the street. And that, we, that was our first question also, is that we don't want to see them from the street.
I think, I know we're getting bogged down here in the architectural, but I think one of the basic questions was, there was an issue about a moratorium on gas connections by Con Ed. Have you looked into that and?
We have. Just before the moratorium went into effect, we had our plumber file an application and we met with Con Ed and we were able to lock in a new meter, a new service, up to 1,200 CFM, which we probably won't need that much, but we were lucky in that regard. I think we, we got it on about, just about the last day. So since then, we've met with Con Ed twice. They've been monitoring what's going on, but we are convinced that the project is real. We've been talking with them about the, about the gas and also the electrical service. We'll be, we'll be needing to provide a new underground electrical service to the, to the building as part of the work.
Okay.
Pat, did you get the, did you see the lot?
Yes, yes. There was a letter. I think that you'll have to, did you, I guess you were CC'd on this letter from Christina Lamalino?
Yes.
And what you should do is read over the letter then and then address those issues. I think some of the issues though have been addressed what we're talking about tonight in terms of the privacy from your lot into her lot.
Yes, I think, I think, and you know, we've, we've spoken with her and the conversations, I think, have been positive and productive, mostly because I think what we're proposing is going to represent improvement to her garden in, in many ways. It's easy to understand her concerns. I think when all is said and done, there won't be much issue there. The separation between the garden space and her space is, is extreme and, and I think, and you know, and now, and now with a massive masonry wall there, I think that she'll probably be, probably be satisfied with that. As I mentioned, the existing, the existing wall there is deteriorated and unsightly. The new wall that would go in would be, will be nice. You know, it'll be a new stucco wall. She's also asking about precautions during the construction process. Obviously, you know, property has to be protected as it would be in any project, and so I think those reassurances also will, will, will help that process.
I think also, I guess you'd be working with the building inspector and with our engineer and with your own structural engineer just to make sure that all those issues are resolved in terms of the structure, the structure that you're creating and whether it'll have an impact on the structures next door.
Right. We're, we're already moving along with the structural design there. It won't impact her, her garden. All the work is, all the new work is occurring on our property. I think we'll probably need to get permission and go on her property in order to finish that wall. But the, the, the steel bracing and the masonry work occurs within the, within the property.
And the comments are made on the board.
Yeah. Do we know, do we have to know or should we know the, what that, the wall is going to look like? He said they haven't decided what it's going to look like. Should we know what it looked like before we go any further?
I, I think the material, I think it's finished. Should be left up to the ARB. I, I think we should care about them. You, this work can do the elevation. Gives you a sightline. It's residential, it's residential, I think.
Yeah, that's fine.
So whether they can see it or not, I don't think that's an issue because it's residential, it's residential.
Okay.
But that's up to you guys.
Okay.
He's going in the right direction, a much better project than the first original proposal.
Yes.
He's got a few hurdles before he really should come back here. One is with the trustees, and the other is the ARB for the historical district elevation change. And then we discussed, maybe we can sit down with him and the engineer and just, that we can fine-tune all the things, like the structural, the big little things.
Right.
Not digging down to knock the wall and putting a new wall three feet deeper so that it gets out.
I think I had a couple of other comments too, Michael. There were a couple of changes I think that you should make on the short environmental assessment form, and you can take my copy of it. But I think on number four is to check all land uses that occur on adjoining and near the proposed action. I think what you should do is add in under other, the railroad, which is very close to the property there. And then also on question number 17, will the proposed action create stormwater discharge either from point or non-point sources? I think that should be answered yes, even though you answered no. I think that should be answered yes because you are creating runoff. But then also explain how you are handling the runoff, okay? Is this, any notes on it you want to make those?
It's interesting, when they say we will be creating runoff, does that mean additional runoff besides what's there?
It's not clear.
It's not clear, but the fact that you have an easement to discharge stormwater onto somebody else's property, I think that's important to be noted in here, all right? And also how you're handling the stormwater on-site that you're storing. You have those storage tanks. I think those are issues that should be, should be laid out in the EAF so everybody knows exactly what's being done. So I'll give that copy to you so you can use my notes.
Thank you. I really appreciate it.
And the other thing was, I think it was something that had been brought up last night too, was the driveway coming out of the garage. You know, you have that wall to the north of the driveway and then the sidewalk just beyond that wall. And I think we just wanted to make sure that both pedestrians and vehicles are aware of what's going on and protected as a vehicle is backing out of that garage area. It'd come up as possibly some sort of light and some sort of, maybe a buzzer, some sort of warning when a car is backing up so that pedestrian, maybe they're sight impaired too, would know that a vehicle is backing out of there.
That's, you know, that's, that's a fine suggestion. We did, you know, we did reconfigure the sidewalk with the yellow striping so that the driveway is, is very apparent with signage as well, but you know, let's be safe about it and add that, that audio alert, I think is what the Han engineers recommended.
I was going to say, Pat, I ended up adding that.
Oh, you did add that?
Yeah.
Okay.
So no problem with that. It's a fine suggestion.
Pat, I had, I just had one thing to clarify both for Michael and so that the record's not confused. The previous application wasn't denied. It did just, at some point, they just didn't come back anymore. Let's say it's abandoned, so just so you don't think.
Okay.
Any other comments from any board members? Any comments from anyone in the audience on this matter? No, I think, I think if you just respond to those issues and work with Ed and Doug on the construction issues, hopefully we'll be in good shape in the next month or so. Okay?
Great. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
I have to say, I'm looking forward to a refurbished building.
Yeah. I think it'll be a question for the village.
Thank you very much.
So let's go back now. We can go back to the order that we were originally going to start. And the first item that we will take is 2019-13, 107 Harriman Road. Second will be 2019-22 Barney Park. And our third will be 2019-15 to South Astor Street. So with that, let's go to 2019-13, Terry Cohen, 21107 Harriman Road.
I'm about to, from Hudson Engineering. Nothing's changed on the plans since we were last here and we submitted the applications. I believe there were no additional comments. We're looking for our approval.
Okay. Right, Doug, you had no comments. You said they met all, all the criteria. So unless there are any other comments from any board members, any comments from anyone in the public on this matter? Right. Then Marion, do you have a resolution?
Whereas in June 2019, Terry Cohen, 21, applied for site development plan approval to construct a patio and install fencing at a property at 107 Harriman Road, which would include construction and regrading within a regulatory floodway. And whereas the applicant modified the project to build a deck rather than a patio and to eliminate the fencing and regrading in the floodplain. And whereas proposed improvements require floodplain, water bodies and water courses and freshwater wetlands permits, and whereas Han Engineering reviewed the plans and in memoranda dated June 4th and September 3rd, 2019, listed a number of issues, all of which were satisfactorily addressed in subsequent submissions. Planning Board held a public hearing on the application on June 5th, September 4th and October 2nd, 2019. Han reviewed the floodplain, water bodies and water course and wetlands permit applications and in a memoranda dated September 27th, determined that all requirements for the permits are met. And whereas the type-two action under seek when the FO requires no environmental, that the planning board grants floodplain, water bodies and water course and wetlands permits as well as site development plan approval for the improvements reflected in the drawings entitled proposed, Act 107 Harriman Road.
Any comments from any board members? Resolutions? Can I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Thank you.
Good work, Marion. Next item is 2019-20, Laura Gray and Robert Honstein, 2 Barney Park.
John Malone, Ferguson, Malone Architecture, representing Honstein Gray. We picked up the comments that we had last month and we have a few remaining. The big change that we made on the civil side, Pat, was we eliminated the rain garden and went to a subgrade system. And then I think the few, the few comments that are, they are related to that subgrade system and also we have a small sump pump that we're showing in the well of the stair that we needed to show on the civil. It's only shown on the architectural.
And then also you received a verities from the zoning board?
We did.
Okay. Any comments from any members of the board? No? Any comments from anyone in the public on this matter? No? And Marion, do you have a resolution?
Whereas in September 2019, Laura Gray- Whereas in September 2019, Laura Gray and Robert Honstein applied for site development plan approval to remove an enclosed porch and deck and build a one-story addition and extend an existing porch on the House 2 Barney Park, which lies in the View Preservation District. Required a variance for coverage, which was granted by the Zoning Board of Appeals on September 24th. Hahn Engineering reviewed the plans and in a memorandum dated September 3rd, listed a number of issues, most of which were addressed in a subsequent submission. Whereas the planning board held a public hearing on the application on September 4th and October 2nd, 2019. Whereas the proposed improvements would not impact the view of the Hudson River from neighboring properties. It's Type 2 action under SECW, therefore requires no environmental review. Now therefore be resolved that the planning board grants the application for site development plan approval of the improvements reflected in the drawings entitled Gray-Honstein Residence, subject to compliance with the items listed in Hahn's October 2nd, 2019 memorandum.
Any comments on the resolution? No? You have a motion then to adopt the resolution?
So much.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. The next item is 2019-15, Unumark LLC, 2 South Aster Street.
Start to state your name, please. Yeah, hi, I'm Mark Webber. Hudson Loft is our property, 2 South Aster Street, and I'm here tonight just to kind of get everybody, I guess, are you familiar with our, we're trying to add on a terrace to the space. The space is a third floor assembly, place of assembly. We do events, bar bar mitzvahs, weddings, and we're trying to get into the wedding business. The brides are looking for outdoor space to hold their ceremonies. We're not looking to increase our capacity or, you know, our headcount or occupancy at all, but we are looking to be able to offer a space to host water, water facing and outdoor ceremonies. And so I guess my goal tonight was to get your perspective on it. We did get a response from Hahn Engineering on our submittal, and there were some things they had asked for, and Hudson Engineering Consulting represents me in this, did the submittal on our behalf, and they had some comments on that. I'm not sure if you want me to go through that now with you?
Well, I, you know what, the last time this was submitted, I believe it was taken off the agenda because there were some issues. So this board has never really seen the actual...
Submittal.
Submittal, right.
Okay.
So if, you don't have it with you.
So I can give you...
We can use my copy if you want to.
The basic gist of it was a hundred foot long, 12-foot deep terrace.
Do you want to go through the balcony first?
Sure.
I'll clip it to the...
There's clips on it.
Who do you want to start with?
All right, I'll start with the elevation and then I'll go through what...
Is there any intention to replace the windows, to make them floor to ceiling with oak doors?
So, yeah, but, sorry, the goal, the goal, the goal would be to, so this is the elevation where the third floor, the goal would be for this set of windows, this is the elevator right here, about 24 feet, which is, there's a scale beam here and a scale beam here, remove those windows and the brick and then put in like a nano wall, like an accordion style glass retractable wall. The goal being that you could have guests facing the water and they would be able to be back into the space, you know, within the space rather than, so that the guests would be oriented towards, towards the water. So they would, we would be trying to put in like a retractable wall system there.
That's not necessary what you're showing though, because it looks like you're showing outdoors.
Yeah, so I think, so we need to do some architectural, we need to do some further architectural drawings and actually we haven't brought in an architect yet, so I guess this is more, this is more exploratory. I'm just trying to understand what your issues might be. For example, there was something about rainwater runoff and, you know, it's impervious over impervious, so that was something that we didn't seem to be an issue. You know, again, we're not increasing the capacity, we're not looking for a capacity increase, so I wasn't sure if that triggers any parking things. I guess I'm just trying to understand where your concerns lie so I can bring in the proper professionals and then, you know...
Well, I think it, I think it does, if you're, if you're going to make a deck that's 12 feet wide and 100 feet long, that's an additional 1,200 square feet of space there. Does that not then permit you to have more people in that facility? And while you're saying that, again, this is just one of the minor comments, while you're saying that it's gonna be used for weddings and what have you, I can just see on the 4th of July, 100 people standing out on that deck looking at the fireworks over the Hudson River, so I...
Well, we're not open to the public. I mean, the idea is we're basically, you have to rent the space out, we charge a good amount of money to do that, so the idea here is that the space, the space, the space needs to be, everything has to be relative to each other. So if our ballroom can only support 200 people, probably 150, I don't know, whatever the numbers are, 150, then, then the same will be for the cocktail space. Everything is in support of the other. I'm not looking for an increasing capacity or guest count. Even if this does support more people, to your point, I'm not looking for that.
What happens with the stuff is that it's not nearly about you...
Sure.
Or what your, your business is. It stays with the building.
Right.
So you could go away and then someone else could come back, and then his point is very well taken.
So I guess that's why, I just want to make sure I address all these concerns and then come back to you with the proper answers and I'm not, I guess I'm not sure where the concerns will lie ultimately with this project, so.
I have a concern with, do you have any intention of altering the face of the building?
Aside from the...
Aside from the doors or whatever you're gonna do with the windows?
Well, I'm...
I mean, the basic cinder block that the joints are matching, some are in and some are out, unless you think that looks good, I don't...
Well, so I'm just the tenant, you know, the building is different ownership, so I don't have control over the second and first floor.
Well, I, from my point of view, I don't know about the rest of the board, but the front of that building is awful to me.
Right.
And, and if we're gonna go through a process of changing the front, part of the change should be fixing the wall, the face of the building.
Right.
In my...
Sure, I can take that to the landlord and, you know, again, I don't, I don't, I don't have, I don't think I have control over what he does to the facade of the building, but I, I mean, again, they're supposed to be constructive and just...
I'm trying to be constructive.
No, no, I appreciate it.
When you walk by by the park, you look up at that building and it's just awful.
Sure, yeah, so I'm certainly happy to, I mean, we want to just create a successful business there and...
I have some other questions, just the history of the building.
Sure.
I mean, was there a change in use, I'm sure that wasn't a catering hall through the years. Did you get a change in use permit?
That would be, again, so I, so just so we understand the, the history of it, you know, this was...
Well, I don't know the history.
I'll tell you, yeah, sorry. So, so it was, it was a business, it was a, built by the landlord.
Well, I'm sure it wasn't built as a catering hall, so the village has a change in use permit program.
They have an application in with us.
It was built, I checked that, it was built as a factory in 1955.
So three years ago, was, four years ago, was turned into this, the Hudson Loft and then I was a caterer.
And you got an application that's in process.
Yes, I was a caterer.
Application is in process or was approved the permit?
The previous one was, wasn't it?
Previous one. Because it's not a change, because it was a change of use.
So it was being used as a, it was being used as a catering facility?
It was, it's been approved as a catering facility.
Oh, okay.
Right, and then this is a new, for a couple of years by a different person, company, whatever. And I think you just...
I just recently took it over and...
Does the permit need to be changed to the new one?
Yeah, that's what that is talking about.
They had an application in front of us, we responded back to it to the landlord a week or two ago.
And my second regarding use. I've heard that there's parking in the building? Is there a permit that required to park in the building?
That is the reason why he wasn't here for the last two months.
So to get permission to park?
It's been removed.
It's been removed?
It's not gonna park in the building.
Sorry, so I have no access to that parking. It's not in my lease. I have two parking spaces and then I have my, basically use the train parking because we only host events when...
Wow, that's a good question. Who is, you use the train parking on, so do you, it, does it state in your lease that you have the use of, of those spaces? Because as I understand it, Stanbridge or whatever the name of the corporation is that owns the former Trent Building has a lease with Metro North for some spaces in their parking lot. So do you have, does it say in your lease that you are permitted to use those spaces?
No.
Okay.
And those are permitted, well, suppose you have an event that's not a weekend when anybody can park anywhere?
Yeah.
Where do people park?
Well, I mean, depending on the event, we turn the events away because we're very realistic about the permit, like the parking limitations. So, so like we've, we've definitely turned away events that have called in and if they can't shuttle, so first we'll say to them, look, can you shut? No. You know, if they say we're gonna shut up with 250 cars, I don't know, 100, 100 cars, whatever the numbers are, we're gonna say, we have no way to push you until, unless you do it after, after hours when the train parking is available. So it's just, you know, we're, we're definitely, we realize the limitations of the space and that's something we sign, you know, we kind of signed on to. And the reality is that I'm just looking to really get monetize our Friday, you know, our business is such that we really work on Fridays, Saturdays and Sundays and we work from, you know, working everybody else isn't working, right? If you're having a wedding, you're having it after hours and that's the majority of our business, so.
But I think as George brought, Mr. Boyle brought up though, this, this deck is going to go with the building, it's not going to go with you and the lease.
Sure.
When you're gone, somebody else can come in and use it. And I, I went back and looked at the ordinance and I have an issue about the parking, the whole issue of parking here, because my understanding is that the property that you are partially leasing is in a different ownership than the Stanbridge property next door. Maybe the same people, but it's a different ownership, it's a different corporation that owns it.
Sure.
And that building, as I said, was built in 1955. And according to the, as I read the zoning ordinance, any event space or assembly space or restaurant is required to have one parking space for every four seats in the building.
So we're under the impression that up to 150 people, we don't have to provide parking. Above that, we have to provide one per four, and right now we are only, we only have occupancy for 150. So our impression, and I'm not saying this is accurate, I'm just saying what our impression was, is that we're conforming.
Okay, well, let me just read you the ordinance. Regardless of the district in which any of the following uses may be located and regardless of the use to which they may be necessary, if designed to seat 100 persons or more, an auditorium, assembly hall, stadium or restaurant, tavern or other place in which food or drink is served, shall provide at least one off-street parking space for each four seats.
So would that be above 100? Is the 100 included and then we have to provide...
If designed to seat 100 persons or more.
So starting from zero?
No, I don't know, I don't find...
I guess what I'm saying is that do we, do I need to provide parking for everybody, one space for, per four people above 100? Or do I have to start from zero people to 200?
From zero.
Okay, so if it was 90, I'm not gonna provide any parking?
Mr. Marion?
Well, you're, as far as I understand, again, yours, your floor is approved for up to 150 people. So if I divide 150 by four, that comes out to 37 and a half spaces, which is bumped up to 38 spaces. So you're required to have 38 off-street parking spaces for any event that you hold in that building.
So if, I guess as a, if, would, would the board want to see a limitation of hours in order to, in order to, in order to comply with the parking? Because it's, I mean, we've all seen the building.
Parking is important, I'm not trying to, to make light of it. You should provide parking existing and proposed. We can go over that numerically, back and forth, we're not getting anywhere, so you can see where, where you're not efficient. I think requesting a parking study on existing and proposed parking and outlining where his 150 come from for the next meeting would be appropriate.
Or where his spaces come from.
Right, yeah.
The kind of simple thing is it's, I hear two different ways. One is he's waived for 150 people, then it kicks in.
That's not, he's not right. It's, it's...
You'll figure this out.
No, it's figured out, it's, I have it figured out, I demonstrated at a work session. So I'm happy to demonstrate, without having all the numbers, my numbers are not exact.
Okay, so we'll wait till, all right.
So let's get their numbers in, have their guy come sit down with me, I'll show them how it was approved at 150, and then you'll see that there's, that's where we came up with 150 from. Because you have a credit for the existing grandfather spaces, it, it works to 11, there's 11, there's like 14 spaces outside or something like that. It's the reason why they were here for the application a year or two ago, for the extra spaces to get to that number, which wasn't done, it's not on your site plan. And you didn't do it, it was your fault. No. And then we'll need the drawing for the architecturals that you didn't do. They were presented to the application, there was an empty space, they don't show the kitchen, they don't show the restrooms, they don't show the offices, because those square footage is gonna be important to get your parking numbers correct. Okay, so...
Well, I guess, how does your, so I know we do this in different municipalities, certain municipalities look at active floor area. How do you look at seats?
The floor area to us, divided up with the square footages of each space given to us and we'll work on it.
All right.
Signed by a licensed professional, the plans that we...
Yeah, so and, so I guess what I'm, what I'm trying to do is a fact finding mission of, okay, so I gotta get a parking guy, right? And I'll get you that guy and we'll, and we'll figure that out. I mean, what other, you know...
Let's get to the biggest issue.
The water, the water, the water, it sounded like was not, I mean, again, impervious over impervious, the engineer said it was not a thing.
That's not a big issue, but we can...
Well, that's something I brought up, so I...
It needs to be addressed.
Yeah, you know, there were some other issues.
Yeah.
I don't think the chairman is done, there's another big issue.
But then, did you finish what your comments were?
Yeah, so I guess, you know, they said no utilities will be disturbed. For comment five, the answer on the application was no and therefore no information should be required. Comment number six, item number 13 of the EAF, we will revise indicate Hudson River. Comment number seven, we have the affidavit. So that was our, that was the first...
And next to that too, what Ed just kind of mentioned was, the previous application had some additional parking and stuff, northern area where the parking is, that if that stuff was in, was already done, it should be included or where it's at in the process.
I follow.
There was, there was a, an application before us that was approved...
To add parking to the lot.
Right, yeah.
Several spaces to the north of the building.
Okay, so I, that's, is that Bill's new parking lot? Just, I don't know what, it has nothing to do with me and Hudson Loft, I mean, we're just a tenant in a, in a, in a building with our lease.
It has to do with your application.
Do we have anything, in what sense?
It's a, it's a pending approval that either is or isn't part of your application for your count of parking spaces.
You're gonna count those spots for us?
We're not counting them.
Okay.
We don't know because we don't know where it is.
Okay.
So you need to get the landlord, work that out, is it going in, is it in, where's the handicap spots? The site plan you're showing is not existing conditions, it's of an old service.
Okay.
Okay, as, as is the floor plans you sent.
Right.
They're of a...
Well, the survey I just did like two months ago.
Okay, then it's not saying approval.
All right.
Okay.
It's a brand new survey.
Yeah. Okay, I think we have to get to this point.
Yes, I think other comments from the board members.
He passed over my, my issue of the face of the building.
Right, so we have to talk about the facade. So you just like a point, like an architectural, like a rendering or something?
Well, what are you gonna do with the face of the building? Leave it the way it is? I mean, I would be disappointed if you were gonna do that.
So would that, if I were to, if I were to adjust the facade, would that help my chances of getting past and...
Well, I think that's the physical aspects. I think that there is another basic question, which is the noise issue.
Sure.
And the noise complaints that have been brought to the attention of, I guess, the village from this facility. I believe there's some people here in the audience who may want to speak to that too. And I mean, unless, did any, anyone on the board want to comment about that?
Can I just make a comment about that because we have, spent a lot of money and...
Wait, before you do, I just want to hear from any... Wait, before you do, I just want to hear from any of the board members.
Have we been having complaints of that building in general?
For years.
For many years.
Sure.
And is this going to add more complaints or is this going to alleviate some of them?
So...
I mean, there's a concern that you're... Now you're coming... Right now, you're contained within... Inside the building. And we're getting noise complaints. We mean, the village is getting noise complaints. Now you want to come outside the building. Is that going to just exacerbate the noise complaints?
Sure, so, so things just, um... I brought in a sound engineer because we were aware of it and it's... I mean, it's not something I... I don't want to... I don't want to disturb neighbors and it's, I mean, frankly, it's not good for no one, you know, it's not... It's not productive. So we brought in a sound engineer. They temporarily installed of like a theatrical extremely heavy soundproof drape. They tested it. Um, I can... Happy to provide backup on this, but it... When we tested it with and without the drape, it was a 20 decibel difference. And what they found was that the sound was bouncing off the, um... I guess that's the north side, the side closest to the Tappan Zee Bridge.
That'd be the west side.
West side, so that was bouncing off that building, the large building that was right next to us, and then shooting up the hill. Um, and so when we installed that drape, it's cut it down 20 by 20 decibels. I, subsequent to that, bought the drapes, installed them. Um, we have had events since then. And actually, those events, we haven't had sound complaints. So I'm hoping that we... I'm hoping that that has helped sheetrock the ceiling below the space to help... Well, we did it from a fire perspective, but it also was... Should help the sound. And I am willing to continue investing in and trying to mitigate sound issues. And so as it relates to this specific, um, you know, modification, the goal again is not to have... If you think about the progression of a party, this is a ceremony slash cocktail space. The idea is that people will then ultimately move into the ballroom. And that's where the... That's where the late night like event will take place. So I don't foresee people being out there past eight, nine o'clock. And I'm happy to put parameters on that about the doors being closed. Like, I'm happy to work with the town to try to make it work so the neighbors are not disturbed.
Again, that's really nice. And... And if you were here. When you leave, that's not the case.
Right.
Okay, and it's the... It's the board's responsibility to look at this not as your needs as much as what's the impact of what you want to do to the village.
Right.
Okay, so you already have a noise issue, which you already understand as an issue. And they've tried to mitigate that by opening up this wall into this like porous opening, which I completely disagree with you about. These doors are gonna be closed during the ballroom part of this. Uh, they'll be open throughout the extent of this part... Of this party. And in fact, if I was to do it, it would be at the end of the party as well. So I just don't believe that that functionally, that's true. So what is happening here is you already have a noise issue and now you're going to exasperate it by having these open lungs in this... On this side. And I just don't know what the impact's gonna be to the neighbors, to the residential neighbors around there. I do have one... We're gonna deal with the parking issue. Because that, again, is about the life of this building. One has to figure out this thing. So those are probably the biggest concerns that I have. Especially at having an entire length, like an aircraft carrier length of this thing, just says that it's an extension of the inside onto the outside. I think it's a great idea, okay? I'm gonna tell you, it's a nice place to go have a party. But I'm just afraid of the aftereffects of the surrounding neighborhood. So only way I can see you even getting this close to being approved is to figure out ways, which I don't know that what they are, of kind of mitigate all those concerns, especially the noise.
Just... Just devil's advocate, wouldn't I... Wouldn't it be the same if I opened up all the windows? I mean, like...
And you... And if that was the case, then you would... People would complain.
Complain, right, which I don't... Which, again, I wouldn't want. And I don't want police showing up at our parties.
There's a huge difference between opening a window and having this large terrace that's open with no windows. And Nana Walls are walls that disappear.
Right.
Okay, so your goal is to do the exact opposite of that, is to open it up and in essence, make more noise for the neighbors. It's just a byproduct of what you're trying to do.
Well, I'm... So I see what your perspective is, which is that once you grant this, you can't really police it, right? But what I'm saying is I'm willing to... To submit to...
It doesn't matter. You could be out of business tomorrow. You could be out of business tomorrow. I hope you're not.
I hope I'm not too.
And we've had residents with this before. I remember the Arts League Country Club wanted to have an extension. And we went through very clearly with them about the type of glass they had to use and a lot of different acoustical things.
Yeah, I spoke to them.
They were not doing this as an open area. They were just having a closed room
Right.
with windows. And we made them go through big hoops to make it so that it would mitigate what was already an existing condition. And people were complaining.
Because they had an open area before and people in the neighborhood, I mean, far in the neighborhoods, it's not troubles.
Right.
They could hear, you know, the speeches on the microphone, you know, it's like a megaphone in their backyard.
Sure.
So when they rebuilt, it was all closed.
Also...
Would you be interested in having a...
...drapes controlling some of the noise. This is the wintertime. In the summertime, when you've got a party going on, there's no way you're gonna be able to close the drapes.
Why?
Why? Because people want to have some fresh air. They want to look out at the river. The sun goes down later. It's ambiance.
In a party, you want the drap... You want the... You want to create... No, it's actually the opposite. We want to... We actually want to make the room dark because we want it to use the lighting within the space. And having the windows is actually detrimental. So it's certainly not... It's something where you're looking at... It's not like a restaurant where you want ambiance for a view. You want to create an environment and...
I understand what you're saying, but if you're having a party with the river view, you want to see it. And it's going to be dark.
You have it on this...
You're not adding much light to it.
This, this view, the drapes are just over here on that... On this wall, this view is staying untrucked. But basically, what we're talking about here is we need to figure out from a sound perspective, how to... You want me to get a sound engineer, I'm assuming?
Well, I don't know. I mean, the fact that you're creating seven double doors there now that are just windows. And I'm not sure you're talking about the correct wall where these sound drapes are. So the north is just Stanbridge's...
That's exactly...
...Trent building. Why would you have sound drapes there? I mean, the people who are complaining about this are to the east of this building, behind it.
You have to understand how the sound works. So what the sound's doing is it's bouncing off those window... It's going... Again, this is a sound engineer. I don't understand how the sound works either. But from the sound engineer, you know, you have... First of all, the space is, it's wood floors. It's metal deck above, so there's not a whole lot to absorb it and the sound is doing this. And so what these drapes do, because they're so heavy, is they just kill the... They kill the reverberation. And then he was also saying that the sound was traveling down, which I think has been helped by having the sheetrock below it. So the sound... And again, we can... We talk about orienting the speakers. So you orient the speakers towards the river, uh, you know, as opposed to orienting them towards the neighbors, right? So those kinds of things make... Do affect with the way the sound works and the way that we do or do not disturb people. And again, so we're trying to figure out...
I think you have to look at it in just in a lot simpler way.
Sure.
So you have a space where you don't have any doors. You just have windows that are more or less closed. And you already have an issue, right? So now you're coming here and you're proposing to open up this entire wall. Okay, you're making now speakers in essence by opening this wall. So that the sound is gonna emanate out. So you already have an issue, all right? And all you're doing is making your issue in a simple term, no engineers needed, much more intense. All right, so I don't see how any other kind of logistics... If you want to find a sound engineer who can say and prove that, in fact, by opening up this wall and putting this deck out there, that it's going to be quieter than what it is now, you know, I'd be interested in that. I don't think that's the case, but...
Let me just ask you another question then, because to your point, if I said, okay, well, we're gonna invest in all these sound deadening investments, if you allow us to put in the deck, is that something that would work for both parties?
I think you should invest in all the sound deadening and then show to the village that you're not creating a problem anymore. And then we would consider it. But at this point, I think considering it now may not be the right time to do it. Because if we're still getting complaints about this, why would we want to possibly open up where you have seven doors that people could be constantly walking in and out of? You know, they are on the third floor of a building. They're going to want to get outside. And now you're creating a 100-foot-long deck where they can go outside. It just... It just seems to me, just intuitively, it just seems that you're going to have more people out on that deck. And that just creates more of an opportunity for additional noise problems. And you have... And I'm really interested. Do we know, are these complaints only coming from the people on Buckout Street? There is a residential apartment building right next door. I'm surprised... I don't know if they're... If we're hearing any complaints from those people. I mean, those people live even closer than the people on Buckout Street.
Would it be helpful to FOIA who's complaining and then bring that to the...
No, it's due at the board meetings. I mean, it's mainly the Buckout people.
Yeah, Buckout. Yeah, well, you're gonna have a chance to speak.
But you seem to, when you said... When you answered Mr. Boyle, you seem to missed the essence of his comment. That the current noise complaints are coming from the building inside the building. Now you're gonna move that noise generator outside the building. And somehow, some sound engineer is gonna say that's better.
Well, I guess the truth... The issue here is that... Is that I'm looking at this practically from the way that I intend to use this space. And what you guys have to do, I understand, is part of your job, is consider how could somebody at all use this space? But the reality is, is that I have no intention of... People want air conditioning. People want heat. You know, I have no desire to open up all the doors, blast the music. I mean, what's the point of that? You know, I talked to... I talked to Nana Wall. I can get triple-blazed, like triple-thick, like Nana Walls. If that's something that we need to spec and look into, it's significantly more money. It's something to discuss. I'm... But I'm not a sound engineer. I didn't understand how the sound worked. I didn't think that putting a drape on one wall, which there's no sound over there, could do so much. And I witnessed it with my own ears when the sound engineer came in and it was... It was night and day. So I don't know if you guys have sound background. Again, I'm happy to bring in a sound engineer if that's what we need to do. But I guess the issue with what you said, Pat, as it relates to my situation, is that this is somewhat integral to me wanting to this business, I think to this business being really functional. And so you're... It's a little bit of a chicken or the egg and you're saying, okay, well, you have to invest all this money before we... We'll grant you this permission. And I'm saying, well, how do I know if I'm gonna get this permission? So I don't really want to invest all this money. And it's just a little bit of this. As a tenant, as a tenant, it's a struggle that I guess, you know...
It's absolutely your risk, all right? But what you have to understand is your goals and our mandate are not necessarily in sync on this.
Sure.
All right, so our mandate, as I understand it, is we're here to make sure that whatever is done doesn't have adverse effects on the village.
Sure.
Okay, so that's what we're looking at. And it's up to you to decide if you think this is... You've heard it from virtually everyone, that there is a big concern about what you're proposing. And we gave you specific reasons why.
Yep.
So if you want to invest the money to figure out how you can try to convince us that we're wrong, then great, that's your risk and that's up to you.
Sure.
And that's it, right?
Yeah.
Any more comments from any board members before we open it up to the public? No? Any comments from anyone in the public on this? Wait, before you say... Just come up and take the microphone, state your name and address.
Kevin Gallagher, 77 South Buckout. I've been calling Everton Police since all this nonsense began. You can check with the mayor. I text him every time something... Soon as the party starts rolling, seven, eight, nine o'clock, I let him know the noise is going on. We were told 11 o'clock is when they're supposed to shut things down, so I give them the benefit of the doubt. I wait till 11, 11 o'clock. If it's 11 o'clock, if they're still rolling, I call... I call the police. Your soundproofing, you should get your money back because it doesn't work. And I see no reason why 7, 8, 9 o'clock, 10 o'clock at night, we have to be subjected to the thump, thump, thump. We can hear the DJ talking. It's... I wish you guys would come down to hear what it sounds like because I'm at South Buckout, right?
I should know if I...
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. The sound comes up and it goes up the driveway. And the people just brought the house... I don't know. They're not here, but they're probably away. But that noise goes right up the driveway and comes right across the street. When we're laying in bed, we're trying to watch TV, all you hear is the thump, thump, thump coming through the window. You can hear the DJ talking, yelling, screaming. But the one strange thing, and you talk about sound engineers, when you're in the front of the building, on the railroad side, you don't hear it. You only hear it on the backside. Because we've driven by. We've come, you know, driving home, we'll pass, you know, the back and you hear it coming out. But when you go to the front, and you ask my wife, you go to the front of the building, you can't hear it. So the sound is going towards Buckout. But I agree with you guys. Once that... If that balcony gets approved, there's gonna be people just... If it's gonna be nice enough, they're gonna be on the balcony. And I think then the people from the condos next door, they're gonna get the full blast of the noise. But I'm ready to... I did 37 years of NYPD. I just retired two weeks ago. The last thing I... Last thing I want to do is to call my brothers in blue for a stupid noise complaint. But when you're home, eight, nine, 10 o'clock, and you hear this bump, bump, bump coming through the walls, it's really irritating. It's like a toothache that you can't get rid of.
Excuse me, Mr. Gallagher, when did you install these drapes?
Mark, like two weeks ago, three weeks ago.
Just two, three weeks ago.
Mark, excuse the microphone. I apologize for the transcript.
Two or three, two or three weeks ago.
Two or three weeks ago? So has there been a party since you installed the drapes?
Oh, we did a party last week or two weekends ago.
No, I did. And I texted...
Was it different?
No, I texted the mayor. I texted the mayor. They were rocking and rolling. I had to check. It was probably 8, 9 o'clock at night. And then the noise, when I'm 11 o'clock, I says, all right, I'm gonna go down, go outside and listen and have my phone. And then by 10 after 11, whatever the party was, it shut down. So I didn't want to call just to, you know, because it was 10:00, so I give him a little bit of leeway, but...
But you gave... You came out with an interesting point that you might want to consider is that obviously you know the conditions that exist right now. And what they're saying is that the sound is emanating out towards them. So I would tell you, regardless if you get this or not, if you want to stop calling and living in a better way is to bring your sound engineer to figure out how you can make it so that that mitigates the sound that's emanating out towards them. Because it sounds like you're not getting that on the outside. So that's just on the side that...
Or turn the volume down inside. Because we can hear the DJ talking.
Yeah, my hunch is it's... Sounds of art is not a science. That's the one thing that, you know, people that do concert halls, that's... They'll study every concert hall there is. And then they do it and it's... Ends up not being so good. No, those are really good. So most sound engineers will play the same thing, that this is a real art. So there probably are ways that you can mitigate your existing space to dampen the sound, especially towards Buckout. And maybe that's a way that you can figure out. But you have to prove it. That's the thing. With all these things, like because it's an art, it has to be done. And then someone's gotta be in your bedroom at 11 o'clock and say, "Oh, I can't hear him. That's good."
I mean, you can just... You just walk down the street and you can hear it coming. And then sometime it's that the leaves mitigate it a little bit. But in the winter time, when those trees, when the leaves are down, there's nothing to stop anything from coming right through. And then we don't have the air conditioner on, so the air conditioning dampens it a little bit. But in the winter, it's really bad. It's really bad in the winter time when you hear the thump, thump, thump.
We did a sound studio once and we had to bring in an engineer for, you know, there's a glass between the... And what they do is they use different thickness of glasses because they react in different wavelengths. And that's what this Bose thing is all about, is about trying to mitigate this one's waving this way, that one's waving that way. We did a sound studio once, and we had to bring in an engineer for, you know, there's a glass between the, and what they do is, they use different thickness of glasses, because they react in different wavelengths, and that's what this Bose thing is all about, is about trying to mitigate, this one's waving this way, that one's waving that way, and when they hit each other, they sort of dissipate, so there are, there are plenty of examples of, you could have your whole party full blast and a piece of glass right here, and I couldn't hear anything, that, that exists in, in sound studios, so there are ways to do it, but not like that, which is opening it up arcade down to the, out to the, to the river, but your, your concern, I think, they can mitigate it.
Yeah.
Sure. Any other comments?
Hi, Cheryl Brandwine, 85 South Buckout Street, I don't have much to add, I think you're all very sensitive to the noise complaints. We appreciate that you just took over the space, I think, a year ago, but this predates your tenure there, it's about three years we've been dealing with the noise at this party space, and I have young children, and they can't sleep, they're sleeping in earmuffs when there's a party, I don't think that they should have to do that. There's a lot of young children on the block, you know, there's enough anxiety for kids these days, so like, the weekend's supposed to be when you catch up on your rest for grownups and for children, and I don't think 11 o'clock is a reasonable time to have to ask you to turn the volume down. I think the volume should be turned down far earlier than that, I think there's nuisance codes that should protect us. The police have been in my house numerous times because of these noise complaints, and my house is literally shaking, I'm down the block from Kevin and Donna, so I can only imagine how it sounds in their house, which is really directly across from the space, because it's on a third floor of that building, it, it really emanates right up onto all the homes on Buckout Street, and we would just ask that you just turn down the volume, and, and the parties should end, I think 10 o'clock is a reasonable time, I think 11 o'clock is too late, there's people, the new people that just moved in have like a, a two-year-old, I don't think they should have to suffer this, it's, we're a residential quiet neighborhood, I don't know how this was approved, but now that we've been dealing with it for a number of years, we ask that you just not allow the party to be brought outside, this seems so unreasonable, I thought this petition before the planning board was to put in more soundproofing, and when I heard that this is what you're asking for, I'm shocked, it, it seems to me the opposite of what is necessary to protect the quiet residential neighborhood that we live in, this, it's not a thumping nightclub, and that's what we are left with, so thank you to the planning board for hearing our concerns.
Any other comments from any, any audience?
No. I have, look, and you were talking about the change in use permit, that there wasn't existing one, but that is a pending one, I, I was a little confused about that.
The village code has a change of use and a change of tenancy, so the other, the first tenancy was the law, and now it's Mark on the Hudson, so they have filed a change of use for that as well.
Okay, now, now, what's the process for that, is there public hearings, that, that these complaints of the existing building can be heard in that process?
No, it's all in-house.
So, how is he able to conduct parties now without approval?
They're in violation right now.
Can I just make a comment on this? We didn't change the name, the same sign is still there, it's still called Hudson Loft. I, I haven't changed.
Your application's under Mark on the Hudson LLC, the change of tenants.
My, my application, from, from who?
Your application here says Mark on the Hudson LLC.
I don't, that must be...
That's what's on it, that's what's on the change here?
Sorry, I'm...
We, we have Hudson's boss as a tenant, now we have Mark on the Hudson as tenant, as a change of, it's not a change of use, it's a change of tenant.
I'm a change of tenant, correct, I'm not a change of, it's the exact same.
It's the same, it's the same application for both.
Yeah, but Earl, I...
You said, change of, it's a change of years.
I apologize, because it's, it's what we call it, but it's a change of use slash tenant.
Okay, so we're in violation for not, for not submitting a change of tenant.
I received it a week or two ago after we hit that.
Okay.
We finally came in with a check dated that day.
Great.
And we sent comments back, and we haven't heard back from either Bill or Steve, the two emails that were on the application.
Okay.
You can check, you can, I can, I can give you an example of that.
Sure.
Any other comments from any of the board members?
I'm gonna end with the, that quite frankly, if it wasn't for the noise, it's a great idea, all right, you're gonna have a party space, and looking out into the, to the river, it's a great idea, so my advice is, if you're really gonna pursue this, figure out a way to make it so that at 11 o'clock, they don't, at 10 o'clock, at any time, they don't hear anything, okay? And if you can figure out a way so that the noise is on the riverside, and no one's gonna complain about that, which, good luck, then, okay, that's all I have.
And after you solve the sound problem, you figure out how to make it look better to the board.
It's easy, go ahead, that's right.
Every time I walk in the park, I see that building, and it sits awful.
Let me get, let me get a consensus here of where the board is, I mean, as, as far as I can tell, no one is really in favor of this application at this point, so, I mean, it's...
Good admiration.
Well, I just want to make sure, because this gentleman is, he has to know whether he's gonna go ahead and spend money and pursue this application, or whether he wants to take some other avenue, and I think you're hearing, there are five members here on this board that are opposed to this application, so, I mean, it's up to you if you want to proceed with it, but I don't think you're gonna get far with this court in terms of this application, until we know that there are no more complaints from, as, as a starter, no more complaints from the neighbors that there continues to be noise emanating from, from this facility.
Right, but then that's no guarantee that anything will be approved.
Correct, there's no guarantee, there's no guarantee. But, but again, at this point, I don't...
Can you just explain that? No guarantee it will be approved, you mean, when I, if I were to, if we were to do the, so hypothetically, if, if we solved the neighbor issue, then you said...
There's no guarantee that it will be approved.
Oh, right, 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 okay, yeah, yeah.
But I just want, I don't want you to think that it's...
I thought you said improved, not approved, sorry.
No, approved.
Approved, sorry, right.
No, I just don't want you, I, I just don't want you to, you know, because you said something before, if I make all these changes, then you'll, you'll approve it, and that's not quite fair.
Right, there's no guarantee that that will happen.
Right.
So, I think that's, right, that's the consensus, then I think you can take that and proceed as you would like, but I don't, now, again, you, you've got five people on this board who are opposed to it, to what you're proposing at this point. Okay? Any other comments? No, I have a motion to adjourn. Second?
Second.
On the favor?